All right, it takes about one minute for this point and then it should be live.
Okay. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. We'll do a quick roll call for the board members. Dave Calabacchio.
Here.
Heather Patchell.
Here.
Roxy Finer.
Here.
Sal Santa Maria. Frank Treglia.
Here.
Matthew Van Ormer.
Here.
Jennifer Nolan. Sarah Ethier.
Here.
Okay, I'll just remind the board that when you speak to just please say your name when you're making comments or questions so that we can identify you.
This is Jennifer, I'm here.
Okay, thanks Jen. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we do have two emails that were received for public participation and I will read those quickly for the board and for all those in attendance. The first email is from Amanda Behuniak, 139 Smith Road. I am writing to the board tonight to strongly consider our students to return to school on January 19th, 2021. We personally have four children in district, all four of them receive special education services to some degree. The age range is preschool to fourth grade. It has been a very trying time for our family during this closure. As hard as their teams try, their services are just not the same as they are in person. I'm just gonna ask you all to hold for one minute, I'm having a computer problem. Okay, I'm back, sorry everybody. I'll continue with the letter. It has been a very trying time for our family during this closure, as hard as their teams try, their services are just not the same as they are in person. We say this not to bring grievance, but so that you can, you as a board can understand the severity of the situation at hand. At the Special Board of Education meeting where we were presented with the results of the surveys, it appeared to be the only thought for the parents wanting their children in school was for childcare. I can tell you personally that I have had to resign from my position in an emergency department during a pandemic to fully manage my children's schedules. Our youngest child is in pre-k and cannot attend during live circle time and our feeling is that he is not gaining any of the social skills nor the foundations that he needs to enter kindergarten. Our three other children's grades have slipped significantly due to the fact that they are hands-on learners. We also understand that the typical hands-on learning is not fully occurring when they are in person. Our children specifically thrive off routines in being in a surrounding that better promotes learning. I understand some children thrive at home with their education and that is why parents were given a choice to have their children be full-distance learners. We have seen a drastic change in behaviors and focus level when trying to attend to synchronous learning because of distractions at home and that are occurring through Google Meet. We urge you to strongly consider a return to in-person learning and handle individual cases and quarantines as they arise like all the other districts in our area. We can and should be doing more for our children's education. The second public comment is from Nicole Malloy, 155 Atwood Road. I write this very brief letter on behalf of my special ed son who currently is in second grade at Blackrock School as well as the other approximate 844 students present in the school system. We were given the option to homeschool but never given the option to continue solely in-person learning when the time came. My son was taken disruptively out of the classroom going five days a week to strict distance learning. No hybrid model, no parent input. I don't need a babysitter, I need a licensed educator. One who is experienced and knows how to help my son during math time when he's struggling getting the concept or through reading when he continues to get 25 or 50% on a comprehension assignment that he doesn't understand and needs someone to provide him support. My son is now failing math and has dropped all his academic grades. He even struggles through some of the special assignments where I find myself messaging educators how to do what the assignment asks. I am sorry, I don't find it appropriate that I need to understand and learn the concept in order for me to teach my son. Although we've stepped up during unprecedented times, I don't think we have our own absolute best. I don't think we have done our absolute best as there's always room for improvement. I've watched my son cry on countless occasions, have behavioral outbursts that we didn't even know existed anymore and struggle through distance learning while feeling like he is never going to get it. It is not a good idea to provide the option of in-person learning, but it is imperative these children go back to school immediately. Please familiarize yourself with something that happens numerous times a week now that we have decided to enclose our children at home. And that's it for public comment. You will see in the approval of our minutes from last month's meeting is the response to December's public comments. So next we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Dave Calabacchio make a motion to accept and approve the regular meeting minutes of the Board of Education dated December 14th, 2020 as presented.
Matt Van Ormer, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? We'll vote by exception tonight. If no board members have any objections. Are there any nays? Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, thank you Heather. Next item on the agenda is our recognitions. And the first recognition we have is the December Rotary Student of the Month who is Kirsten Sundell. Kirsten is being recognized as the December Rotary Student of the Month. This recognition comes as a result of Kirsten's hard work in and out of the classroom. Kirsten certainly deserves the recognition as an active and valuable member of our student body for her extracurricular activities and her willingness to help out on any project. Kirsten will be recognized at a Rotary luncheon at a date and time to be determined. The Rotary Club will honor Kirsten with a gift and a lawn sign. Kirsten will be awarded with a Barnes and Noble gift card on behalf of the Thomason Board of Education. On behalf of the Board of Education Kirsten, congratulations, keep up the great work. You and your family should be very proud. Great job. Our second recognition is for Nathan Scorola. And Nathan has been recognized by ASAP for an annual celebration of young photographers. Founded in 1999 ASAP is a social profit organization recognized as a place for high-quality and innovative learning experiences. ASAP believes that when they honor children's imaginations, invite them to create, encourage them to take risks and trust their resourcefulness, they will become the empowered, resilient and compassionate adults the world really needs. Serving nearly 10,000 students throughout Connecticut each year ASAP promotes equality, diversity and inclusion in all its programs. The ASAP Photography Collective provides an experience for high school juniors and seniors from around the state to collectively create a photography book, expanding on their original ideas from Celebration of Young Photographers 2020 Quarantined. The book will be published and circulated to colleges where students will gain recognition for their work. One of the Photography Collective's goal is to connect high school students with colleges and universities and give students a chance to explore the potential as young artists. ASAP's Annual Celebration of Young Photographers provides students in grades six or 12 the opportunity to participate in a large-scale professional art exhibition and jury show. A panel of professional photographers selects 60 photos to be included in a unique exhibition. This year Thomason's own Nathan Scorola was selected to participate in this unique exhibition, having two of his photographs selected for the online event and I believe we do have a video. Congratulations Nathan. And the third recognition that, recognition, sorry, that we have tonight is for Seth Murphy. Thomason High School offers a number of UConn Early College Experience courses to its students. Early College Experience is an opportunity for students to take UConn courses while still at Thomason High School. Every Thomason High School ECE course is equivalent to the same course at the University of Connecticut. Courses are taught at Thomason High School by high school teachers who have been credentialed as UConn adjunct faculty members. UConn credits are accepted at 87% of colleges and universities given Thomason's ECE students transferable college credit before beginning as a college student. The UConn Early College Experience offers only two scholarships each semester to certified teachers who are interested in UConn Early College Experience instructor credentials. Thomason High School's social studies teacher, Mr. Murphy, is one of those two scholarship recipients this semester. Congratulations, Mr. Murphy. And next on the agenda is presentations and there are none. And then we have the Student Representatives Report. I'll hand it over to McKenna or Caesar or Isabella.
For academics, we have been distance learning for about a month now and students have really caught on to a schedule. Class participation has increased and the students were giving a break as academics were suspended on the summer 23rd for winter break and resumed on January 4th. The second quarter assignments will be due on January 15th as the quarter comes to a close and the second semester begins.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to mute, okay. So for clubs, before winter break, the Student Council hosted a virtual ugly sweater contest on school's Facebook page and since then, clubs have been able to semi-regularly meet during our winter break and have been making plans for when we return back in person.
The CIAC released their plan for winter sports and still plan to pick up the winter season on January 19th. And as of right now Thomason is gone with CIAC and has suspended winter athletics until we return from distance learning on the 19th.
Great, thank you McKenna, Caesar and Isabella. Next item on the agenda is the Chairperson's Report and item number 8.1 is the USPS mail to the Thomason Board of Education members which were consistent with last month's correspondence of the Kingdom Hall newsletters. Item number 8.2 is the calendar, the two-year Board of Education meeting calendar for 2022 and 2023. Do we have a motion to vote to accept and approve the 2022 and 2023 two-year Board of Education meeting calendar as presented?
And Dave Calabacchio make a motion to approve those calendars as presented.
Matt Van Ormer, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Dave Calabacchio, just want to discuss the possibility of having one snow day, a regular, normal snow day built into the schedule. As everybody knows, we have 181 days on our academic calendar. We only require to have 180 during a normal year. And I propose that we set aside one day, one traditional snow day for for that.
Okay, um, Dave, let me know if you guys can hear me, my phone is acting a little crazy. That, that would go under the approval of the district calendar, which is the next motion.
Okay, sorry about that.
This one's just for the Board of Ed meetings for the next two years. Is, is there any other discussion on the motion? Is there any nays? Are there any nays? Are there any obsessions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. And I will turn it over to Francie.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, this is Francine. Beginning of my report is correspondence, any correspondence to or from the superintendent. They're pretty self-explanatory. However, I end this section of my report with a request to update the 2021 Thomason Public Schools District Calendar and the 2022, next year's calendar. Both have been approved. What we are updating is the language that Dave was just referring to regarding snow days and I will show you in the next slide. So here is the 2020, 2021 district calendar as it was approved by the board already back in July. And what I'm asking is where you see the yellow highlight at the top of the screen and it's now been pulled out, pulled out and brought forward. I'm asking that you change the language from simply stating emergency school cancellations will be rescheduled to June 2021 and change it to remote instruction will be implemented for all applicable emergency school cancellations. If remote instruction cannot be implemented and an emergency school cancellation occurs, that school day will be rescheduled to June 2021. So that is the first motion I'm asking for. The second motion is very similar. The yellow highlight at the bottom of the calendar for 2122. Originally read, emergency school cancellations will be rescheduled to June 2022. And instead, I'm suggesting that the board have it read, if permitted by the Connecticut State Department of Education in the 2122 school year, remote instruction will be implemented for all applicable emergency school cancellations. If remote instruction cannot be implemented and an emergency school cancellation occurs, that school day will be rescheduled to June 2022. Those are the two motions that I have asked the board to bring to vote.
And do we have a motion?
Dave Calabacchio make a motion to, for those amendments to both academic years.
Matt Van Ormer, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
You know, just again that I'm in favor of making the 181st day a true snow day and using the, using the day perhaps for somewhere down the line for personal development instead, but just to have the kids have one true normal snow day in that 181st day.
So Francine, does that, your proposal allow for that?
At this time, I would need to meet with the staff that would be affected by that suggestion and I would ask that we table this action until I have the opportunity to meet with the teachers' union who is obligated to work 185 days. And if the students are not making up that day, or if they are, then the teachers can make it up, but if they're not and they're getting a snow day, I just, I guess I'm looking for clarification, Dave. Are you looking to have a traditional snow day and eliminate the 181st day of school as opposed to making it up in June?
Well, I'd rather not make it up in June if we didn't have to, but you know, it depends on what the union says and whatnot, but you know, I'm good with tabling it, but I just wanted to throw it out there since, since it has been discussed amongst various people that perhaps a normal snow day would be, would be appropriate for a little bit of a mental health break and and just let the kids go enjoy the snow for a day. You know, I don't have an issue with, with, with not pushing it back into, in making up the day in June. I don't think a whole lot goes on those last few days of June anyway, especially when it starts getting nice out, so I don't mind having, you know, if, if we can, just a normal 180-day school year and, and, and do something better for, do some professional development or something like that if the union would approve it, so.
Okay, so what I would like to be able to do is if, if the board would approve, I would like to be able to meet with the teachers' union and the non-certified union and the administrators' union who are all obligated to work a certain number of days and come to an agreement as to what this 181st day might be converted to if it's not going to be made up at the end of the year. And then get back to the board at the February meeting and we'll bring back this request to vote on this change. And I can have an answer for both this year and next year. This year is pretty much cut and dry because we had already eliminated the 181st day when we shortened the school year at the beginning of the year, so we've already used that for professional development this year. But I want to make sure that I bring that to the table with the proper language for you and then for the 2223 year, I will get you what is agreed to for that day.
Okay, so we need a motion to, to table the 2122 calendar. But I believe we need to accept and approve the 2021 because we've already moved forward with the proposed changes.
Yeah, I would say that it's safe to agree to the 2021 calendar because we don't have a 181st day anymore. We use it for professional development in August. The 2122 calendar, I would like to, since we are offering such flexibility, I would like to be able to expand that flexibility and, and discuss it with the unions because maybe they would have a better idea as to how to use that day instead of also waiting until June for their professional development. So I would say we could, we could keep the 2021 vote on the table and take away the 2122 vote for now.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend the previous motion regarding the 2021 and 2122 district calendars?
Well, I'll make another motion to, to accept and approve the 2021 schedule or calendar as amended and to table the the following year calendar until we get a report next month.
Do we have a second?
Matt Van Ormer, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll just ask again in case someone's on mute, is there any discussion on the motion? Are there any nays? Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
This is Francine speaking. I continue with correspondence. We had no correspondence from CAE, CAPS or the Department of Public Health to be shared with the Board of Education. However, the Connecticut State Department of Education did send us seven items for the Board of Education to review. Under reports, contracts and general information, we have our administrator reports as typical each month. We also have our enrollment report. And under the enrollment report this month, we have an additional bit of information. It's related to the NESDEC Enrollment Projection Service that we have signed on to. So we became as a district, a NESDEC member. They were offering a membership discount that also included an enrollment projection report. We are due for an enrollment projection, so what we have done is collect information that is being sent to NESDEC as a foundation for them to build that report and it has been included in this month's overall enrollment report. Lastly, under my reports, I have the Distance Learning Report specifically. I have the District Instruction Model Options and the COVID-19 data discussion information that I'd like to share with you, knowing that on the 19th of January, we are going to be approaching a new model or reinstituting a model that we've had in the past. So that is where I intend to go next. If, if that pleases the board, I'd like to be able to give that report orally.
Yes, please move forward Francie.
Okay, so in the Instruction Model Options, I wanted to start with what's going on across the state. Since we started this year, even back to August when the board met to decide the initial instruction model, feedback has come from parents, from staff, from members of the community indicating to me what they knew was happening elsewhere and how they were comparing it to what we were doing in Thomason. These are the official numbers that come from the State Department of Education as to what type of instruction model is being used across the state. So you can see that there's a fully in-person, mostly in-person, all the way over to a mostly remote, fully remote with hybrid in the middle. And you can see the percentages. This is a cumulative percentage being measured since the beginning of the school year through November, through the end of November. So understand too that down below it explains the difference between what is fully or mostly in the in-person and remote models. But I wanted this to be shared with the Board of Education because there's been many people who have offered information that might be considered speculative or accurate, but we really need to rely on what the state is reporting to us. The state also reports on a weekly basis what learning model percentages, the percentage of what learning model is being used. So they report fully in-person, hybrid and fully remote percentages across the state. So you can see here, it's broken down into five categories and here, when they do the weekly report, it's broken down into three. So you can see that fully in-person is the dominant model right now, but the next closest is fully remote. And then we have hybrid in the middle. We have Instruction Model Options available to us that we've utilized here in Thomason and I'm going to review that now. We have our remote instruction, which we're all very familiar with because that is the instruction model we're using right now. The hybrid model, which we used at the beginning of the school year and the in-person model that we've been using has been a four-day-a-week in-person, one-day-a-week online model. As you look at these models, there are two continuums that work opposite each other. While this is rather obvious, I feel that it's necessary to juxtapose them. So in order to control in-school transmission of the virus, the closer or more frequently that we're in remote status, obviously the higher level of control we would have. For student engagement, while we are working very hard to keep our students engaged in all types of instruction models, it is very clear that an in-person model offers the most opportunity for true student engagement, and I believe that one of our parent letters hit on that as well this evening. So I'm sharing this with you so that you can see that we're in a constant struggle between what is the best for our community. Is it, is the priority to minimize transmission of the virus in our schools? Is the priority to increase student engagement? Or are we looking for a balance? And that's what I'm hoping the board will conclude tonight. Another bit of speculation, commentary, and opinion that has been shared with me from different members of our community is what other districts were doing before our holiday break. There were a good number of people who approached me saying that no one was shutting down before the holiday, and as you can see here, that's not quite true. There were over twenty districts in our area alone, I did not investigate the rest of the state, that chose to go to remote learning before the holiday and have given a date by which they plan to return to either a hybrid or a full instruction model, and those dates are shown here. So as you can see, the first seven returned this today to school in person, the next six intend to return next Monday, and the next seven intend to return the Monday after, the Tuesday, excuse me, after that. And then there is one school that went remote and has yet to offer us a date by which they intend to return for in-person. Another set of districts that I wanted to make sure I made note of, these districts did not go into a remote model before the holiday in a grand way like we did. If they went into remote, it was because they had to shut down for a contact tracing condition. For example, there was one district that shut down only their sixth grade. So I wanted to point out to you who was full in-person and who was hybrid. I also wanted to indicate to you that wherever you see black, that just simply means that they don't have those grade levels. And you can see here that there are far fewer districts in our area that did not shut down and go to remote between, at some point between Thanksgiving and Christmas than there were that stayed open. COVID nineteen data that's available to us, this is our map as of today. There we are in Thomaston, and then we are in, obviously, in red. There are a good number of people, excuse me, of towns that are in gray. That means they have fewer than five cases. And then there's a, there's one town that is in yellow. They have between five and nine cases per one hundred thousand. And then we have the one town down in the southern area, which has between ten and fourteen cases. As of the last report that I received on Thomaston, Thomaston has fifty-seven point six cases per one hundred thousand. Understand that that per one hundred thousand is just used as an equalizer so that numbers can be compared across the district. We all know that Thomaston does not have one hundred thousand people living in town. However, it is, like I said, a number that we use for comparison, and that will be helpful in this next slide. So here by county, you see we're in Litchfield County, and they are at forty point two new cases of COVID per one hundred thousand per day. And in Thomaston, like I said, we're at fifty-seven point six. All of our counties are listed as high risk in both the leading and secondary indicators, and you can see that Litchfield County at at last update, which is the end of December here, they were at seven point one percent for positivity. So there are four indicators that the State Department of Education and the Department of Public Health like us to use when determining what type of learning or instruction model we should put into place. One is the number of new COVID cases per one hundred thousand, which we just looked at. The other is the percent test positivity, which simply means the number of positive tests that were the result of the total number of tests during a particular fourteen-day period, that average number. So you'll see in the next few slides information about those two highlighted items. We are not going to contemplate items two and three under the secondary indicators at this time. So here is our local data as well as our Connecticut data. So if you look at the graph on the left, it's the town of Thomaston's fourteen-day average for new COVID cases, and we get dipstick checks periodically. It's actually a fourteen-day rolling average, so we don't get this number every fourteen days. We get fourteen days' worth of information twice a week. So this graph shows you that on the first day of school, Thomaston, the town of Thomaston, was averaging five point five seven new COVID cases a day. By the time we moved from the hybrid model to the in-person model, we were at two point six, a little lower. And then when we decided to go to remote learning only after the Thanksgiving holiday, we were at sixty-five point two one. Connecticut daily positivity, you also see September first, we were at less than one percent, and then we were up to almost two and a half percent by the time we went to an in-person model, all-in-person model, and then by the time we decided to go fully remote for several weeks, we were at, across the state, five point eight eight. As of today, Connecticut's positivity rate is five point two nine. So these two graphs were put side by side so that you could see what's happening with our leading indicator, which is our positive cases in the town of Thomaston, and what's happening with positivity of test results across the state. They both appear to have gone in an upward trend and are heading into a lower trend at this very moment. Here again is just highlighting when the first day of hybrid occurred, the first day of in-person, and the first day of remote, so that you can see on a larger version of the Thomaston graph where we were across the duration of the school year. And I've done the same for the Connecticut positivity rate. Again, you can see there was a spike, and then as of today, we're at five point two nine percent. Now, with these indicators that we're looking at, the leading and the secondary, you see that we're at fifty-seven point six for the number of new cases of COVID. That would put us at the red end of the leading indicator spectrum, meaning we have more than twenty-five new cases per day, per one hundred thousand. This would mean that we should be in a less in-person learning mode. However, if you look at the secondary indicator, our percent positivity, we're at five point two nine percent, but as you saw in the previous chart, that percentage was trending, starting to trend down. So the options that you get for this secondary indicator would be to say, is it trending down to flat? Is it flat to upward? Or is it simply trending upward? If this had been last week, we'd be in the red. Now we're pushing ourselves closer to the yellows, so we see that we should have the opportunity for more in-person learning. Again, that balance, we see one direction for Thomaston, the other direction for the state. This information is unique to the public schools in Thomaston. As we've had positive individuals and close contacts identified in our schools, we have kept a report by school by month. This shows you how many COVID-positive individuals we had at each school, and of course, in total across the district, and also the close contacts. I've also included in the last row what the monthly average was for the town of Thomaston during that month. So in September, there were six point eight new cases in the rolling average for new COVID-positive individuals in the town of Thomaston. We had one. In October, there were seven cases in the town. We had three. And again, forty and a half in the town, we had seven. And then finally, in December, there were nearly eighty cases, but we had nine. And those are the average. That's the average across the month for the town's COVID individuals. So we're showing a trend upward, but it is not as steep as the trend for the town overall. I highlight that because I want to remind the board that the school environment is different than the greater environment of Thomaston. So to get back to what we were, what I was describing earlier, that balance, do we emphasize control of transmission of the virus in our schools and head more back, you know, head back toward remote? Or do we emphasize student engagement and head back to in-person? And or how do we find that balance? So again, we're at fifty-seven point six in Thomaston, which would indicate to us we should really be remote. However, we have a positivity rate that's trending down to flat, which would mean we should go more in-person learning going forward. Whatever model we choose tonight as a board, I want to emphasize these four points. If we were to be remote, hybrid, or full in-person, communication of COVID nineteen positive cases in our schools will continue to be shared with the community. That is an absolute obligation. There had been some feedback that I received from frustrated members of the community who were receiving these messages, thinking that it was, well, quite frankly, propaganda, and it's not. In fact, I withheld a report tonight about two COVID-positive individuals in our district because I didn't want it to appear that I was sending it out just before a major decision by the board. That information will go out tomorrow. The reason for communicating COVID-positive cases in our schools is to make certain that parents get the information directly from us and that the community understands what it is that's occurring in our schools. Is it affecting one school, all schools, one grade, some students, many students? It's very important that that communication continue regardless of instruction model. Next, contact tracing protocols. Feedback that I've received from staff, parents, and members of the community has varied. Some praise us and say that our contact tracing is phenomenal. The most important group to praise us is the Department of Public Health, specifically the Torrenton Area Health District, because we follow their protocol with emphasis and great conscientious effort. Then there are others who misinterpret or don't understand why we're doing what we're doing. We review video. We contact the bus company. We make sure that we scratch much deeper than the surface of just looking at a seating chart. And that is because we are working very hard to minimize spread. I can go back to that table that shows that we only had nine cases in the month of December, when the town was experiencing way more than that overall. We were shut down in that month, but most of those cases came right on the heels of exposure during the Thanksgiving and just before the Thanksgiving holidays. Please understand, contact tracing protocols are adhered to with a standard of deliberance that we are not going to compromise, and that would be regardless of instructional model. Then we have parent and staff obligations, which are pretty much the same, with the exception of outcome. Parents and staff absolutely need to communicate with us as well. They need to communicate with action by either keeping their children home when they're ill, or staying home if they're a staff member, if they're presenting a COVID-like symptom. Or they need to communicate simply by phone and say, hey, I'm curious. I I think that I might have a COVID-like symptom, and I'm not too sure what I should do, or even further, my doctor has indicated to me, or the Department of Public Health has indicated to me some scenario, and I need to inform you of it. Those obligations will keep our environment healthy. Further, parents and staff need to be vigilant when we return. We've all gotten out of practice wearing masks for seven hours. We need to make certain that when we wear them, we wear them correctly. We need to make certain that when we can, we maximize our distance from each other. And the instruction model will determine how wide that distance will be. Finally, the difference between parent obligations and staff obligations is that if a staff member cannot report to work and they're healthy, meaning they're an asymptomatic quarantined individual who can teach remotely to the children who are in person, that is all well and good unless we don't have a human substitute to be in the classroom when that teacher is absent. We have walked a very thin line, especially as we approached Thanksgiving, where we were short-staffed multiple days. At some point in the future, if we have a spike, whether it's a spike outside of the community or not, doesn't matter to me so much as a spike of staff illness or staff quarantine, and we can't cover their absences, our in-person learning will have to turn over to remote. That's the difference. When parents keep their children home, they can continue to learn, but when staff stay home, they cannot necessarily be covered for in-person instruction to occur. Further, if our staff do take ill, and I hope that none do, they may not be able to do their work remotely. Please understand, I'm emphasizing this because if we go to an in-person model of any type and we find ourselves short-staffed, we may have to close school for a duration that is equal to the duration of staff that have been quarantined. So again, communication will continue about positive cases. Contact tracing protocols, we will adhere to, and we're proud to say that we adhere to those protocols with great fidelity. And parent and staff obligations must continue, but they need to have, you both groups need to understand the outcome of their obligations, and the flexibilities that are available to our students are not the same that are available to our staff, whether they are quarantined asymptomatic or symptomatic. So I ask now that the board contemplate the information that I've shared with them and set the next district instruction model in place to begin on January nineteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Do we, I have a few questions, but I'll wait until there's a motion on the table. Do we have a motion or for the next instruction model?
All right, this is Dave Kowick. You opened my head on the guillotine here. I'll make a motion to go back to full in-person instruction, starting on the, what is it, twenty-first of January?
Nineteenth.
Okay, nineteenth.
Who's second, Heather or Matt?
I'll take it, Heather, Heather Patchell.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to add that if we go back to I'd like to add that if we go back to full in-person instruction, that we do so understanding that if we have to change that model due to COVID circumstances, that we remember this moment, that it is our obligation to shut down if we need to based on COVID outcomes, which are so unpredictable, but I just feel the need to highlight that. And further, I would like to ask that when we say full instruction model, that we use the restricted full instruction model that's been in place since October, which is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in-person, Wednesday, remote.
Can I just, this is Sarah Ethier. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I just, like, I've seen what's happened, especially with the younger children. I know I keep going back to this. That's where I have children. Is there any way that we can go full five days? Because it's really challenging to keep these kids engaged. And they're only learning for half of the day. I've talked to Mr. Kozlak. I understand it. But it's just, it's been a real struggle, especially socially, emotionally, the special ed kids. Like, I, I feel like they just need to go back five days.
I agree with Sarah, Matt Van Ormer.
This is Frank Treglia. I agree with Sarah and Matt on this. What's the difference? There's one, it's not like we're gonna not be able to get sick on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in school. I mean, it's either five days in or five days out. That makes it more continuous.
Dave, would you like to clarify your motion?
Yeah, my motion was for a full five days in-person with the, obviously, the understanding that, you know, if things don't go, go as planned, or if we get some more cases that causes to shut down. Obviously, you know, we'll be, you know, available for a special meeting to do that. But, you know, the numbers are going down, the districts around us. Although I, you know, I do know that Litchfield, the town of Litchfield has about a, is a, I think we have about a two and a half times infection rate than them. Morris, you know, all the towns around us, Harlington, Burlington, Womago's towns, they all have a much lower infection rate than Thomaston. Thomaston was really high and really spiked out high. But I'm hoping that now they're on a downtrend and we're still, what, two, three weeks away from going back, that will continue on the, on the trend downward. I'm also one of those people who saw crossing their fingers that as more and more people get vaccinated, and I know it's not gonna be a very quick process by any stretch of the imagination, but that will help things out. But I think for the, for the emotional, mental capabilities of our children and their needs, and the needs of the community, and, and looking at our math test scores especially, and that sort of thing, we need to be in school five days a week if we can. Look, we, we wanted to get people through the holidays. We want to get people through Christmas and New Years and Hanukkah and, and Thanksgiving. And, and we did that, and we spiked, and, and boy, I think we timed it great, that we, that we, we went to remote when we did. But now I think it's time to get back, to get back to it and get our kids back in the schools all five days of the week.
Heather, was your second?
I agree. Heather Patel still second.
Okay, thank you. Francine, could you please go back to the slide that breaks it down by school? And can you or anyone speak to, let's see. The numbers at the center school for close contacts are really much higher than the other schools.
We had incidents, this is Francine speaking, we had incidents of close contacts at center school that affected, if not the entire, then the majority of the population based on the connection of the COVID-positive individual to a large number of individuals in the schools. So for example, I'll use October's number. There are not two hundred and five students and staff put together at center school. However, each instance of someone being called a close contact is counted as a close contact because it is involving a different COVID-positive individual. So for example, there are students at different schools in our district who have been quarantined multiple times because they happen to be near someone who was either COVID-positive or symptomatic. Diane, if you have any insight to provide, go right ahead.
Is, are the center school classes, are they still kept in cohorts? Are all, all the schools basically still should be following?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead. This is, this is Kristen Burnier. Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
Yes, they are in cohorts per grade, and they are kept separate by grade level. So they are, they are co-horted throughout the building.
Are they co-horted in WIN? This is Francine, Kristen. Are they co-horted in the WIN block?
Yes, they are by grade level.
And we, and we no longer have academies because of cohorting. Is that correct?
Correct. So if the, if the child receives intervention services through WIN, he or she would go with their respected other students in that grade level. So sixth grade only cohorts with sixth grade, other sixth grade students. And that also includes our special education services. That also includes our guidance services, any kind of services students mingle with their grade.
Thank you, Kristen.
Sure.
This is Sarah Ethier. I have a question too, Kristen. Maybe, is there any way, because like, those, those cohort numbers are huge. Is there any way maybe that we could make them smaller cohorts?
Yes, we're working on that now. Unfortunately, without sharing, you know, FERPA or HIPAA information, we can't explain why those numbers are large.
I, I can, I can give an explanation for you. This is Francine speaking. You mean about the close contact numbers, Sarah?
Yeah, I was just thinking, is there any way that we could make those groups of kids smaller so that it wasn't by grade? Maybe it was broken down into class sizes, just because I know that there has been a lot of close contacts in that school particularly.
And we do. We, we travel by homeroom and we, we are grouped by homeroom, so.
But there is an anomaly here, Kristen, that I want to highlight. This is Francine speaking. Center school was hit the hardest in these numbers because of the circumstance of two of the COVID-positive individuals and how those individuals interact with large numbers of other individuals. So had it not been for those particular individuals and their responsibilities that expand across a broad group, one would not have had such large numbers at center school. And since there are very few individuals in the district that would have such a broad reach, how do I say this very carefully? If one has already contracted COVID and affected the population, it is expected that one will not contract it again based on science right now. So I would not expect, although I am not going to predict with a guarantee, that such a remarkable set of circumstances would be replicated going back to in-person instruction. Do you understand what I'm trying to say, Sarah?
Yeah, I do, but I guess where I, what worries me is like lunch, for instance. Are the kids sitting in assigned seats every day? Or are they like intermingling different classes at that point? That seems like that would be a good place where we could cohort them with their homeroom pod versus, you know, getting them out throughout the whole grade level.
We, we are, we are looking into that and changing that. But yes, they were still grouped by homeroom and by grade level as best as we possibly can. Due to the circumstances of our cafeteria, it's not always feasible.
And again, I want to highlight, this is Francine speaking, the, the high school cohorts differently as well, and their numbers do not mimic center school's numbers. It's the coincidence of circumstance that made the numbers very large at center school. Of course, I'm not trying to diminish any other efforts to make sure that we socially distance and wash our hands and all of that great stuff. But the cohorting at center school is definitely a cohort model that matches the grade level and the way that the school runs on a normal pre-COVID day, similar to how the high school and Blackrock School run. They are a tighter version of their former schedules. The balance here is how much tighter can we go without eroding the student engagement opportunities? And I think that's what, what Kristen is talking about too, is that we, we have different circumstances of physical plant, but we also have different circumstances of, of course, and staffing that would lead to the potential of a different type of, of close contact opportunity that has passed us now. So I don't, I don't want to get hung up on what would be the job of, of a building principal to solve. The board needs to decide what the model should be and know that, confidently know that the building principals will make certain that that model will function as best as it can be put into place so that we protect the health and well-being of every student while keeping them in person. So I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds as a board.
Yep.
This is Jennifer. I have a question, Francine. The last vote we had discussed was moving possibly to the after-school activities at center school and the five days a week, and that was an area where the Torrington area Health District said they would not sign off on. So we're proposing five days a week. How does that fit in with the Torrington area Health District's recommendations?
So right now, the Torrington area Health District has not made any specific strict recommendations other than to follow the protocol, which is the protocol that, I'll go back to it for you. Which is the protocol of which indicators we should be looking at. So we should be really concentrating on the two pinkish-colored indicators that are here. And right now, these indicators, while trending, both are trending down, we are still rather high with new cases in town. So any opportunity we have to minimize in-person instruction would benefit our group. The concern that I would have is twofold. One, it isn't recommended under these circumstances that we go back five days a week for health reasons. Two, I still do not have a full complement of custodial staff to assist with the mitigating strategies. You'll see that under personnel later on in the agenda. I very much want to come back five days, but we need to be ready because if we do come back five days, we may not be able to stay open with consistency if we're unable to manage the mitigating strategies the way we would like.
This is Diane Aniki. May I speak?
Yes.
Hi, I'm the school nurse at the center school, and I'm also the state liaison for COVID in the district. I just want people to understand coming back, and I think we all agree that having kids in school is, is certainly the best way to be. It's the best way for me too. I don't work as well at home. But I, I want people to understand there's been some changes in the both quarantine period for if you test positive or quarantining, if you test negative. We're gone, we've gone from fourteen days to either a ten-day quarantine period without a test or a seven-day quarantine period with a negative test. That being said, it will decrease our quarantine time, which is, is great because I think a lot of disruption was in the fall because of our quarantine period. But that being said, it is also, needs to be recognized that by decreasing our quarantine time, we are increasing our risk of transmission. I think the CDC has said that they find non-compliance to be huge with people who are quarantining, and therefore they would not either admit to being positive or admit to having close contacts. So they feel that by reducing the quarantine period, that people will be more compliant. And that may or may not be true. I don't know, but I do know that it will also increase our risk for transmission. How that looks coming back to school, we don't, we don't know. We don't know until we come back. We also are looking at a, a new strain of the virus in the UK, which is hitting them really hard, and I hope it doesn't hit us that way as well. But again, that's something that we'll see in the future. I want parents to understand that our quarantine, our close contact tracing efforts are so involved. It is not done lightly. It is not done without a lot of different venues coming into play. I, I feel that people think that we, we quarantine and, and close either down a grade or a school or certain children kind of willy-nilly, and that's certainly not the case. And I think that coming back to school, whether it be, I don't care how it is, whether it's hybrid, it's full-on, it's four days a week. It doesn't matter really how that happens. Parents need to understand that, I think what Francine said is that our, our close contact tracing will continue as it is. It may close us down more frequently because of the lesser quarantine period that the CDC and the Torrington area Health Department is allowing. And that's something that we, we need to keep in mind, and I want people to understand that we're, we're still gonna do things that the way we, we feel are the best way and according to the Torrington area Health Department and the CDC recommendations. But we need to reinforce all of these things at home. So we, we need to make sure that masks are worn every day properly over the nose and the mouth every day, all day, except when they're outside and are allowed to have a mask off for a brief period of time. We need to still try to distance ourselves, and I think anybody knows, and I, I hope I'm not saying anything out of school, but we're not six feet apart in school. We can't be six feet apart in school because of, of the amount of children that are in the classroom and the amount of desks that have to be there to accommodate them. But as far, as much as we can otherwise, whether it be in the auditorium or in the gymnasium or even outdoors, as much as we can do that, we should. We need to avoid crowds, so we, we decrease the amount of kids that are in a club or the, the amount of kids that are going into the auditorium. We need to have ventilated areas. Now in the dead of winter, is it appropriate to have the windows cracked open? I know mine is year-round. I always have my window cracked open. But something else that needs to be addressed because of the ventilation, the washing the hands, it needs to be reinforced frequently. Avoid touching your eyes, ears, nose, and mouth as much as you can and to cover your coughs and sneezes. All those things that we teach even on a non-COVID time, it needs to really be amped up both at home and in school. But I, I reiterate what Francine says as far as our contact tracing procedures will remain the same. I think that parents also need to know that almost anything now is a COVID-like symptom. So if your child comes to school and says they have a headache and they cannot remain in the classroom because their head hurts so much, they need to be sent home because they could be potentially COVID-positive. Aches and pains, you know, the obvious, the fever and the cough and all that, that's, that's kind of obvious, but we're not seeing as much of that as we have in the past. I think more symptoms are a little benign. They're, they're vaguer and they're more difficult to tease out. So because of that, we need to send kids home who present to the nurse's office as being sick. And I think that's been a problem for parents as well. And I think that's been a problem for parents as well, but I think these things need to be understood because going back, whether it be, you know, hybrid or fully on, or however it is we do it, we, we need to be on the same page. And that's all I have to say, I think, for now.
This is Francine. I want to follow up with what Diane is saying. Mrs. Aniki, you and the nursing staff across the district have been vigilant before contact tracing as well. To your point about when, when a child is presenting a symptom and they're being sent home, it is because of your vigilance in each building, in sending children home when they present a symptom, or even staff for that matter, that has kept our in-school cases low. I am confident of that because there are other districts that are not doing that with the same level of vigilance. So yes, parents do need to understand that in order to keep our schools open for all, we may have to close it for a few who are symptomatic and put them on some type of quarantine circumstance, some situation where they need to prove that they are not COVID-positive before they return. And that is a real pain. Honest to goodness, it's a real pain. Coming from a person who took a COVID test on Christmas morning, I am telling you, it's not easy. But this is where we're living now, how we're living now, and the vigilance of our three nurses in making sure that anyone who is presenting a COVID-like symptom is put in the isolation room and sent home immediately is why we're able to contemplate going back full in person with confidence of health and wellbeing in mind. This is part of the balance that I talked about earlier. That balance of what's best for us physically and what's best for us, you know, mentally and, and an education point of view, the student engagement versus control of spread. So thank you, Diane and Doreen and Nancy. Thank you very much for all that you do because you take care of it on both ends. It's not just the contact tracing that you work at, but it's also that you are sticking to the recommended guidelines for pre-COVID circumstances that's keeping our buildings healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, Diane and Francine, Diane, I think you mentioned that the number of days to quarantine has lessened if a person who's been exposed, um, as asymptomatic to seven days. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is that the same for staff and students?
Yes. What it is, is you say you're, you're a close contact on day zero. You, you've been determined you're a close contact. Now we start the next day, which is day one. You have to test on day five or later, get a negative test, be totally asymptomatic for those seven days while you're in quarantine, and monitor your daily health for the next seven days for a full 14-day quarantine period. Although after day seven, if your test results come back negative and you fulfilled the asymptomatic part, you can come back to normal, but still monitor your symptoms. On day 13, if you become symptomatic, then you start the process all over again.
Okay. Thank you. And Francine, are we still using Kelly Services for substitute teachers? Or are we posting any of those positions, um, just on our own?
We have currently, um, building substitutes that we pay, um, as our first substitute in each building. Kelly Services will do the placement for us, but most often we're placing them based on information that we've received from our staff. So the building principals each have someone who does not work for Kelly Services. They work for us, for our district, and they are a building sub that is new this year because we anticipated that we would be competing for an already small pool of substitutes through Kelly Services.
Um, and maybe do you want to just speak to the, um, status of the custodial positions just before we make our final decision?
Yes, absolutely. So when we met originally and talked about why we would keep Wednesday as it was for, uh, remote learning, we were concerned about being able to manage the mitigating strategies for spread. In other words, there's two actions, two major actions that our custodial staff need to perform during the course of a school day. Uh, one would be cleaning and the other would be disinfecting. So to mop the floor, take care of dust, um, do any maintenance or repairs, those things were pushed to Wednesdays so that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, full disinfection could occur so that there'd be, um, a clean school upon arrival every day. We are still short-staffed. We had, um, hired a cust, an additional custodian for each building, and we are still short, and we already started talking amongst ourselves as to how we could share the limited staff that we have so that if we did come back five days, we would be able to, um, manage it as best as we could until we could find that other part-time, uh, position being filled by someone else. But it did take us quite some time to get someone in the position and, uh, soon after, uh, the position was vacated. So, uh, we are short, and I just want to highlight that. I'm not saying that it's impossible to come back five days. I'm saying it is preferred to give us, um, the opportunity to make sure that we keep up on maintenance. But as I said before, uh, when Sarah was asking about, um, how we would, uh, manage cohorting, I, I'm going to say similarly, I would like to leave it to my building principals to manage, um, how they're going to share custodial staff if we were to come back five days a week.
Is there any other discussion on the motion or questions, comments?
I would like to make one comment, a clarification. Uh, Francine had earlier said that there were two positive COVID cases in the district today. That's actually three.
Thank you, Diane. And again, I chose not to send that message out today, um, really because I did not want to give an impression to any, any of the, of the doubters, um, that received that communication to think that somehow I was attempting to sway the board to do anything in particular, um, with the instruction model. But it will continue. You will get that message, um, after this board meeting, if not tomorrow morning, indicating that we have COVID-positive individuals with close contacts.
Hi, this is, uh, Sal Sanabria. I, my opinion is that we should not go back to five full days. While the trend did come down a little bit, it's, you know, the first drop we've seen, and that's only for a few days. And everywhere you look, there's so much, uh, contact tracing and, and COVID tests going on now because of close contacts. Uh, it's crazy out there. My opinion is just that, uh, even though we're saying the 19th, I think we ought to reconvene maybe a couple of days before the 19th and look at this graph again of, of COVID cases and see if the graph still stays on a decline. If it does, I think we ought to go back to the, uh, the, the hybrid where we're two on, one off, two on. But I, I think the amount of cases Thomason is showing, I, I think the five-day model is, is, is too aggressive at this point.
This is Roxy Finer. I agree with Sal. I do not think we should go back to a full in-person five-day schedule. The COVID cases, as he said, may be declining at the moment, but I feel they're going to increase. And Diane mentioned the new strain that's in the UK. It is in the US. I feel it's going to spread here. I think the hybrid model would be better. I understand that students will learn better in person, but for their health and wellbeing, I cannot approve of a five-day in-person schedule.
This is Jennifer. I agree with both.
So the current motion on the table is for a full in-person five days. So that is, um, what we'll vote on if anyone still has any more comments or questions before.
Oh, this is Heather. I have a quick question. Francine, what's the status of the cameras, um, as far as K through six, recording lessons live for those kids maybe quarantined or, um, not, not the distance or the distance learners, but the, uh, the kids that could be quarantined?
So the cameras have been installed, uh, the full complement of cameras that we've ordered have been installed, and they were prioritized, um, in reverse grade level order from 12 down to K. So there are some grade levels that, um, or some course classrooms, like a, a music classroom, for example, that may not have the camera. But as far as four through six goes, uh, I know that they have their cameras installed, just like they're the same cameras that are at the high school. And there are, like I said, a good number at Black Rock School as well. I would not recommend those cameras being used at Black Rock School, um, like they're being used at the high school. As an early childhood educator, it, it would be, um, the children are not old enough to understand that the teacher is talking to a ghost, um, and not to them. Whereas grades four, five and six, that's a little different. There's a level of maturity and understanding there where they would be able to understand what was going on.
Okay. Um, my last question is maybe Mrs. Aniki can answer. The vaccine for teachers, do we think this is in the next phase of the rollout or do you know?
I don't know. I looked that up today on, about, um, on the CDC websites. I saw that they're anticipating, um, vaccine distribution, but it may not be available for the general public until late summer, early fall. What, what are teachers considered? I, I'm not sure. I would think that they're not going to be general public, that they would be, um, possibly in the next phase. But that didn't give me that information when I looked, looked up this afternoon. The only thing, uh, tomorrow's the DPH meeting, and I know that last time we met, it was basically all about vaccines. But in my opinion, it was very vague. Um, I don't think they know yet.
Uh, I agree. This is Francine. At, at the last meeting that I attended, which was with, um, the local DPH, which is our Torrenton Area Health District, they indicated that we should start collecting information from our staff in anticipation of Phase 1B, including our staff. In other words, Phase 1B hasn't been written yet. Phase 1A is what we're in right now. So anyone in Phase 1A knows who they are. And Phase 1A, as far as schools go, only includes school nurses. They do not include any other staff in schools. Phase 1B, once it's written, and I'm sure Diane and I are hoping for the same thing to come out of tomorrow morning's meeting, we hope to see some type of hint of the preliminary draft. But once 1B is written, we will know where our staff is on the pecking order because what, uh, the DPH was educated on by superintendents was that we are not looking to inoculate only teachers because we have secretaries and we have custodians and we have IT specialists and many, many, many other types of people are paraprofessionals who work with students and work with each other in our schools. So they, they were somewhat shocked that they would have to have a tiering of school personnel as well. So 1B has not been published yet. Once we know, um, for certain, once it's published, then we'll be able to move forward. But however, Thomason Public Schools has already begun collecting the information from anyone who is interested in being part of Phase 1B from our schools. And I am sending that list, um, off to the Torrenton Area Health District tomorrow, so that we get to the front of the line. And all that they're receiving from us is first name, last name, email address and date of birth so that they can choose how to prioritize people by age, but they're not going to be able to prioritize by job description, which is what Torrenton Area Health District says is just not right. So they're on the same page with us, but the state wasn't too sure what 1B would hold. So 1B should be beginning in about two weeks. However, like I said, the, the, um, people that are in Phase 1B have not been identified yet.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, um, for this vote, I think I'll just do a roll call quick so that I, we have the exact numbers. So the motion is for full in-person instruction, five days, returning on January 19th. Dave Calavecchio?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Roxy?
No.
Sal?
No.
Frank?
Aye.
Jennifer?
No.
Matt?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Motion carries. I would just like to make note that Sal, if, you know, um, to your comment about meeting again before we return, obviously if the numbers change drastically, um, we can call a special meeting at any time.
Okay, I would definitely like to see that if the numbers don't, uh, stay on a decline.
And, uh, Beth, this is Francine, and just to reassure, because I know the public may not know this who are listening, uh, we get a report as a district on Tuesdays and Fridays that gives us an update on not just, uh, the town of Thomason, but also the towns of Routledgeville County so that we can see trend. So the numbers that were in the graph for the town of Thomason came from those reports. So Sal, um, as we watch that trend, um, change, hopefully for the better, we'll, we'll be able to watch that through those reports that come out every Tuesday and Friday.
Thank you, Francine. And I know that, um, the chair is not required to vote, um, with the majority, but mine would be an aye in favor. Next, um, Francine, we continue with your report?
Yes. So my report continues with reports, contracts and general information. We have no new contracts, but I did include seven grants for you, uh, to take a look at. So the grants are typically, um, put into an electronic format, and, um, once they're approved, we're able to print them. So, uh, some of these grants have already been received and others are still in process. But these are the seven grants that you've received a copy of. And then we have no requests for fundraisers at this time. Continuing my reports, contracts and general information, I go to personnel. Under personnel, we have no new hires, no transfers or new assignments, uh, no retirements that made it to this agenda. No resignations. We do have one termination. We have no renewals and no stipends. I ask that the Board of Education vote to acknowledge my notification of personnel, specifically the termination as listed, uh, per policy 4112, 4212.
Dave Calavecchio will make a motion to acknowledge the superintendent's notification of personnel, specifically new hires, transfers, retirements, resignations, renewal, stipends per policy 4112, 4212, personnel certified, non-certified, appointed and conditions of employment as presented.
Matt, Ben Armour, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Are there any nays? Are there any nays? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have the committee reports.
I have, I have a little bit more of personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Francine.
Okay.
Problem. Um, the rest of personnel, we had one request for family medical leave. Um, we have, uh, taken on, uh, an additional, um, intern slash student teacher. We have a new staff members, uh, with us. We consider them staff members. Uh, this is also another way that we work. If they're an intern, we are able to put them in classrooms as substitutes. If they're a student teacher, they must, um, work with the teacher that they're assigned to. Um, we have no out-of-state field trips and, uh, we have no request to dispose of books, equipment or supplies. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the committee reports, and I believe- Next item on the agenda is the committee reports, and I believe we do not have a report from the Budget Audit Committee, as they will be meeting Wednesday. Is that correct?
This is Francine, yes, that is correct. They typically meet the first Wednesday of the month, so that they can close out the month before and have ample time to produce a report. And since we moved this meeting to earlier in the month, we were unable to get a report ready with the holiday in time for this meeting. So you will receive two reports next month.
Next, we have Policy Committee, who met earlier tonight, and do we have a report from Matt or Heather?
I'm coming, I just have to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
I was trying to pull up my numbers. So we had our, we met as the Policy Committee this week, and we just wanted to inform the rest of the board that next month, we will be looking to fast-track a couple policies, and they are all relating to Title IX, and they are P0521.1, and there's a new policy for P4000.1, and P4118.112/4218.112, and there's a new policy for P5145.5. So I just wanted to make the rest of the board aware that next month, we will be proposing to fast-track those policies.
Matt, this is Francine, may I just explain what fast-track means? Just so that, most especially because of the public, I want them to understand what that means. So typically, as you can see on our agenda for the Policy Committee, we have a discussion about a policy, and then we make it a first read, which means we've had a discussion and determined that edits need to be made, and we post it for viewing. Then we wait a month, it comes back as a second read, again, just in case someone missed it the first month, we allow them to review it a second month and give feedback. And then the third month would come, and it would become an action item, such as policy O200 is tonight. The reason for the fast-track request, which I support, is that these policy changes were part of a presentation made to the Policy Committee in October, and they are federal Title IX changes that we must abide by regardless of the wording in our policy. However, it would be wise for us to update our policy to match the federal changes to Title IX. So we are asking to skip the first and second read, and go right to an action item with these policy changes, which are, like I said, they're, they're federal law changes, so they are nominal, we're not really making any kind of significant change, other than what we're required to under law. So fast-track will require two votes next month, one to get the approval to fast-track, and the other to take action on the changed policies. Thank you for allowing me to explain that.
Thank you, Francine. Is there any other updates from the Policy Committee? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
The Policy Committee has an action.
This is Heather, we have to approve policy O200.
Oh, thank you. There a motion?
Dave Calvecchio will make a motion to accept and approve policy 0200, propose changes as presented.
Matt Ben-Ohmer second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Are there any nays? Any nays? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dave Calvecchio will make a motion to adjourn.
Matt Ben-Ohmer second.
Any discussion on the motion? Any nays? Any abstentions? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Francine, for your presentations. Thank you, Diane. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.